Time being 7:05. Call the Halifax Planet Board into session. Members present, Rick Murray, Amy Trup, and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have continued hearing at 7 o'clock for proposed zoning bylaws for medical marijuana treatment centers. 7:15 continued. 9:34 Plymouth Street, Cube Smart, Site Plan Modification. 7:30, 655-657 Monpont Street, Twin Lakes Liquors, Site Plan Review. Discussion, we have Josh Liddell, Walmart Pasture Lane, Subdivision Control Regulations 235C-6C, and Richard Harrison, MAP 73, 7A-0, Plymouth Street. Bills, Plimpton Express. Meeting minutes are over, August 5th, August 19th, and then correspondents. I don't think I have to read all of those. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Two second.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So do we have, was that a public hearing that we did for the zoning by?
Yep.
And it was continued to tie?
For discussion, because we wanted to have more of a full board.
But we're not open in the hearing.
No, just discussion.
We're close to the hearing last time, right?
Yep.
So, discussion? I don't know. Town meetings next week.
Yeah, I know. You know, it opens up more locations that they can put the stores. You know, the way it is now would kind of limit it to, you know, with just a couple, maybe.
Right.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, you know? It seems like the girl that was in here at last meeting, she, I guess she didn't make it on the, you know, to get, to get in in time.
Right.
But her idea was just to limit it to like 25% there, whatever, you know, a couple stores. You know, I can see her point, but then again, you don't have much competition, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm going to have to think about it. What's your opinion?
Well, I can see limiting it only due to the fact that we don't want to have like an abundant that makes it so none of them want to stay. But, you know, also then there's the American freedom of trying to be able to promote and have different things.
Right.
Because like I think Colonel wants to change it for crafting and a little bit of a grow inside, is that what he was saying?
Well, the one that we're looking at here is for the...
300 feet.
300 feet.
Yeah, 300 feet.
Yeah.
Is he proposing 300 or 250 or what was it?
Let's double check. I thought that it was 300, but... I'd have to look. Yeah, he did. I saw that. Thank you, Joanne. I have it in last time's.
It's going to say...
Well, I got confused because remember he said 250?
Yeah, I think it was 250.
And I think he wasn't changing it. I don't know. Okay, so in this bylaw change with the ones that are crossed out...
It doesn't say how many, it just says, it doesn't really say the distance on this, does it?
It just takes, oh, okay, so it just takes out the established license to pour alcohol. It doesn't change the distance. But we talked about distances, so I'm glad that we're saying that now. So basically, it takes, it takes out, you could be zero feet from a pouring license.
Yeah, it doesn't really say how many feet here.
Yep, so it would be just negating that part of it altogether. So it could literally be...
Still 500 feet from children and all that.
Well, I put it out on my Facebook page to see if I could get some sort of idea of how the town was thinking of it. I don't really feel like I got enough to get a good feel on all of the town. I think most people were saying that they didn't care as long as it was not near children and didn't impact the traffic. That was, that's what I get the consensus of all the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, her point last meeting was, you know, cut it down to 25%, you know, just limit how many stories you can have in town. If you cut down the distance, then they can pretty much stuff them everywhere, you know, away from the kids, you know? So, I don't know, it's a tough call.
It is a tough call.
So, what we'll be discussing, whether we support it?
Yeah, whether we, yeah, whether we support it.
Yeah.
There's only three of us. Like you said, we put it off last time because we didn't have...
You thought, I thought we had...
Well, it'll also, I don't know...
Well, it's going to be up to the town, you know?
It will be, whoever is at town meeting.
I mean, the 500 feet is tough, you know?
Especially based on, you only have certain areas that you can do the business to start with.
Right.
Kind of a... And if you restrict it to the point where there's no place you can do it, then the bylaws could turn out.
That's right.
Here he is. We were just chatting about you.
Good stuff.
Yeah. I mean, either way, I don't know. We were just chatting about how it's not limiting 500 to 300. Remember, we had those conversations that it's actually crossing out the pour license altogether?
Yes, that's, that was the motion, yes.
Yep. Because we had discussed those distances, I think we were just making sure of what we're talking about now.
So the way this looks is like you can put it right next door to a bar? Is that how it's looking here on the way it's written on the, for the public hearing?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
Ultimately, you know, the town's going to vote on this, so...
I mean, 500's tough, you've got to admit that. But what number do you put on it?
Well, his proposal is to wipe off the pouring license altogether, and the way we advertise it, we'll just wipe off the pouring license. It won't change the linear distance.
So basically, we're looking to do a vote on this, whether we support taking that out at the town hall floor. It could be amended to something else, but that's not what we're, we're voting on right now, whether or not we support this the way it's written.
Right. Like I said, the 500's tough, so, I don't know. I don't see it as a problem.
And then we do have, we do have one more piece of data that we can take into consideration. There was 195 people that signed his petition, saying they didn't care.
Right.
That's more than town meeting floor most times.
I know.
So I would entertain a motion, whichever way you'd like to do it. Floor again?
I think based on the people that I've asked openly and the 195 people that were on the petition, that we should bring it to town meeting floor with, I mean...
Support?
Yeah, I do. I think we should support it.
All right. Do you want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to support Colonel Boos' change in the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center bylaw to waive the language or any establishment license to pour alcohol under the provisions of General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12.
Can I have a motion as your second?
One second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
You're welcome.
We take up a site plan modification for Cube Smart. Do you want to go up front?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Norm Kotash, NAK Management and Consulting for Merritt Hill Capital. I understand there are no additional reports from any departments that were filed, is correct?
We don't have any.
Okay.
Do we need to take up the plan?
Have you looked at it before?
Yeah, do we want to look at it to double check, or?
I pretty much remember.
I don't remember anything that was said that we hadn't even had any questions, right?
I didn't see any problems whatsoever, so...
We didn't have anything, right?
No, there was nothing.
I just want to double check. Do you have it available over there?
I have it right here.
Yeah, it should be fine. I have it on your floor.
Amy.
Oh. Cut it off. Thank you. Right, because we only didn't make a move because of the 30 days, right?
Correct.
Okay. Coming back.
It's at least two.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You just want to take it off the application?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And, okay.
Map and lot numbers for the moment.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion for site plan approval for Merritt Hill Capital LP, Norm Kotach, at 934 Plymouth Street, MAP number 58, lot number 3D, for additional storage buildings, to approve the site plan as presented.
Is it possible not to interrupt, but to mention the owner, Merritt Hill Capital, the owners, and the approval?
Sure. I think, I think I...
Or is it?
Merritt, Merritt Hill Capital?
Yes, correct.
I think I remember that. So, the...
The plan.
The plan is prepared for Merritt Hill Capital, dated July 23rd, 2021. Received July 27th, 2021, from PMP Associates.
Is it plan number?
Job number 022021-028.
Do you have a motion for site plan? As your second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
We can sign this.
Okay.
Do you want to sign? Bob? Nine?
20.
Nine two?
Yep, 92. 20, 21.
Low. If you give a travel, do you want to copy the plan?
Yes. Where are you going? Grill 58. Say hi to Phil. She is at the bar.
Yeah, 658. Said to go back this way. It's the third light, but they're like 35 feet to each other.
I have to go to the other shore.
Take a right. It's in with comedy.
What's on your list?
Grill 58. Phil, Phil. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think there's other pieces. I'm going to go somewhere else.
Ah, okay.
Someone signed it?
Yep. There's only the first page. Do we have it?
It's just the first.
It's the right one. The other side.
All of them concerned. Two more.
Received.
This is the text box. Yeah, just put some lines in. This is other plans in there.
Seven thirty, 655-657 Monpont Street, Twin Lakes Liquors. We're not going to have a quorum.
Joanne, can you note that I'm accusing myself? Can you note that I'm accusing myself?
But we're not going to have a quorum. Oh, we don't have a quorum. It sucks.
I kind of noticed that.
I was wondering.
Where's that from?
It looks like we're going to need to ask you to do a mutually agreed upon continuance.
I have to do that.
Sorry.
Jim, there's nothing they can do there. I explained it to you. Gordon has to recuse. Now, if Mark was here, or even if Brendan was here, we'd be okay, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
So there's no point in discussing anything at this point, is there?
Well, it wouldn't really count, right?
No.
It wouldn't, exactly, it wouldn't count.
Because we don't have a quorum right now.
We don't have a quorum at all.
Or to even really discuss it with you. It would be like repeating.
Yeah, I understand. Can I just ask if, you know, if either of you specifically have been able to visit the site at night time?
I've driven by tons.
Yeah, okay, good. I don't want you to come, but I just, that's good enough for now. So, would it be the next meeting? If I do need to do paperwork?
Yes, so I'll fill this out and have you sign it?
Sure.
Okay. Just give me a second to fill it out.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I know, so sorry.
I'm going to end up getting, getting paid with buckets of whiskey here before, before two o'clock. Are you finished?
Yeah.
All right, Jim, save it for us. I told him, I told him to sit back here. I said, I don't think we're going to have to...
So that you know, the next meeting, everyone. Hold on, and I'll get my calendar.
It's a 16.
Oh, thanks, Joanne.
Yeah. Amy, just, just to keep everything sort of kosher there, why do we have Kenny sign that?
Okay.
Because he did sign the, I mean, I filled out all...
Yeah, I have KB Patel as the applicant.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So it would have expired on the 10th, 10th, right, Joanne? So I'm just going to put a 30 day...
Oh, you mean the 45 days would have expired?
On the 10th.
Okay, yeah.
September, so we're going to...
I think I knew that, yeah.
We're going to do the 30 days, which I believe puts it exactly at October 10th, but we'll have seen you on the 16th, and we'll have...
Yeah, so we are giving you the extension so that we don't, you know, we can't say now because the 45 days have elapsed, that we have it by default.
That's correct.
That's right, yeah.
Clerical question, I don't see the petition number on this, so do I put MAP 19, Lot 866?
Let me make sure that, that that's right. Yeah, map?
Oh, wait a minute. Is that going to be the petition number?
Well, that is the parcel number.
Yeah, I know.
It's the same one as you can...
Okay.
It should be on that, the end one.
Do you wanna review it?
Yeah.
I just filled it in with all the information as possible so that we'll be on the same page.
That's fine.
Okay.
Could we get a copy of this as well, though?
Yeah, I can scan it. I have to sign it, too. Do you need a pen? Oh, you got it? Oh, is the petition number here? Oh, sorry, I couldn't see it. Oh, okay. I'm just gonna add one thing on there that refers to the file. Twenty-one SPR two oh nine. Thank you, Joanne. Do you want one for each of you?
Oh, one for each.
Just wanted to ask, any comments from any of the other boards that we should do? Joanne said she didn't think so.
We don't have any, and I don't recall receiving any.
I thought she told me before that they did get a positive one from the building and Board of Health.
I think so, um, I think you-
Thirty days has expired for them to make comments anyway.
Good point. Let me make sure here. I vaguely remember that that was true, that it was the building, and, um- I remember that, so yes, there was no negative that I recall. You bet. Thanks. Sorry for the inconvenience. Hi, guys. You're welcome.
Joanne, you wanna put me back in?
Josh Liddell?
Yeah, he was gonna make it, we're just picking it up.
Okay.
Walmart, we didn't hear anything more on?
Nope.
Pasture Lane, I did talk to John Hucktad again. And he said he is trying to get somebody to get over there and get something started over there on Pasture Lane. That they don't wanna miss the season.
Yeah, they give up, they're running out of time again, they gotta hurry.
So he said that he was gonna get back to me with more of a schedule of what they could do, but he was planning on getting somebody over there and getting something started.
They don't have much time, you know, before you know it.
So what, we have until like Thanksgiving?
Well, it depends, weather, weather's all depending, how late you can pay and all that.
Typically, yeah.
We should predict the weather.
Well, you don't even have to predict it, you know, the weather can vary.
All right.
Just look at the last couple of weeks.
I know. Okay, started soon.
And I still haven't spoken to Joanne about the subdivision control, see if I can get that for next week. And then Richard Harrison, map seventy-three, seven A, zero, Plymouth Street.
So, um, do we have that file? Is there a file on that lot? Probably not, huh, because it was just land. Yep.
So what's the story with that?
Just to see work going on.
Yeah, there's work going on there.
Everywhere I go around town, people are like, what's going on there?
Well, Harrison, he sold that lot.
Right.
Last I knew, he lived in Nashville, Tennessee.
So it says care of George Harrison, right? Joanne, care, I think I have it right here, care of George Harrison.
Richard Harrison.
That's what I meant. Not the beat up.
Yeah, but he sold it, so.
But what was coming up was, you know, just like you had brought before about the drainage and everything, is to kind of keep an eye open for what's going on.
Well, they're doing something there, you must have something, there's no building permit or anything.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, whatever.
But they're bringing in, you know-
Bobby Brown's been in there working.
Yeah, they're gonna bring in re-ground, and, you know, like we talked about, like with Liddell.
Right, right.
I mean, doing the work before getting a plan.
Probably maybe sees Liddell do it, so he says, okay, I can do that, too.
And we need to not have that happen.
You can just go put some bleaching bases in and call it a day.
Yeah, but that's why we're bringing Liddell back, is to prevent that, because we don't, we have-
No, Liddell's, he's got a long way to go with getting that. You just can't keep putting stuff in and saying, okay, we did this, and how you like that, you know? That's kind of crazy.
So, pretty much, I think it was the fourth or fifth time that I was ambled about it, and I thought, all right, that's it, and I just like pulled over to the side of the road and called Joanne and was like, we need to put this on because everybody's asking about it. So I think that we should call them in and ask them what they're doing.
I heard rumors there's a building going up there or something, but there's no permits, no building permit.
Right, and no site plans at Marshall.
Maybe just wanted to clean it up and feel the driving in and out of it, I don't know, but-
But still, that's drainage.
Exactly, that could be what it is, but it's just that we need to have this discussion-
Right, oh yeah.
As to what, you know, what's gonna happen with these places.
Not making a mess and they rip out the entrances and, you know, you try to do it.
Yeah, not picking apart that, but just saying, you know, things going on without the plans.
Yeah, hey, I mean, everybody else has to do it, so, why not?
I agree.
And then one of the other things that maybe we should look at is where the old Kings Plaza was there. It seems to be an wild site work that's been happening there, and there's been no update of a site plan there.
They were in front of conservation as well at that plaza, to get rid of some conservation area and move their septic system out from way back and bringing it in into the buffer zone of the wetlands. So I think that we probably should be looking at that, too, to be fair. And then my thought is that we also need to get back to map ninety-five lot six, I believe it is, that we brought up in January for Montpontet Street. Because there are extensions for site plan, we still haven't seen any, and I think we put a request for stop work order sometime in like July for that, right?
So I think probably what we should do is ask the building inspector for an update.
Okay.
Did the building inspector shut it down, or was it conservation?
We did, we had a vote.
Well-
Well, we can't shut it down.
Well, we had a vote to have it done.
But the crux of it is that the building inspector gave an extension to site plan. I don't know how he does that because we issued the site plan, so I don't know how somebody else can give an extension to that, and then we've seen nothing. So I think we just need to get the update from the building inspector as to what's going on.
I don't think they're doing anything nasty.
Well, it looks like a contractor's guy with no site plan.
They just parked the trucks and stuff in there, all I can see.
I'm gonna make a motion to have updates from the building inspector on, um, map, is it map ninety-five lot six? Map ninety-five lot six, we want a determination on that. Should I do these separately? Okay. So I'll repeat that, a motion to have the building inspector give a determination and an update on map ninety-five lot six on Montpontet Street.
Okay, have a motion, or is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm gonna make a motion to have the building inspector give us a determination and his thoughts on map seventy-three dash seven A dash zero on Plymouth Street.
Well, I mean, I think on that, there's nothing been issued on it.
Determination.
Yeah, but if there's nothing that's gone in, then there's no determination. Like Rick said, there's nothing stopping you from going in and working on that.
Okay.
But I think what we're doing is bringing that up and saying, we need to watch that and see what happens there, because if it looks like it's going into a commercial operation, then they need a site plan, and typically the site plan happens before the work. Because putting re-ground down and then putting drainage in afterwards isn't really the way it should happen.
Okay, so how, what would you recommend on that?
You know, I think we keep an eye on-
Long as you have tracking mud out on the street and doing-
We can ask the building inspector if there's been any permit requests.
Okay, okay.
All right.
So, all right, and my motion to ask the building inspector if there has been any permits pulled for map seventy-three dash seven A dash zero for Plymouth Street in Halifax.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I also would like to get all boards' feedback, so I'm gonna make a motion to get any feedback of what's going on at, um, I don't have the address, let me get it.
You talking about Wellness Church, I hear? We do have a file on that, so.
Okay.
On what?
The old Kings, still out there.
Was that contaminated back there or something, I heard at one time?
I know, there's weddings in the back of it.
Right.
They had some issues with the laundromat there, because that building in the back was the septic-
Oh, yeah.
Basically, the septic system for the laundromat.
Okay.
But that looks like that's been revamped into something else, that's why I said, I think, you know, we ought to see a site plan of what's proposed there.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. It's taken a second to come up.
I mean, it looks better without the storage containers out there.
No, the place looks great, you know, on the street, anyway.
Sorry. While you're doing that?
I think we have an address there, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to get it to come up.
What's the address of the bank, Rockland Trust?
Oh.
Because it's all piled the same puzzle. Good signal.
Yeah, it's really good. Well, I'll bring that back up in a minute, if you don't mind. Make a motion to pay the Halifax Express bill that we have here, invoice number one-two-seven-zero-four for the three-fourteen Plymouth Street advertisement for special permit, two insertions at the amount of ninety dollars.
Motion for bills, or second?
For second.
Motion, second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody take a look at the communications, the correspondence that we got. Anybody have any questions on anything?
What's the extended trailer part, what's that about?
The extended-
Trailer.
Yeah, the one drive.
Uh, ninety-five.
Didn't they have a, I'll look up that address, too, but I believe that they had a-
Five.
Yep. Why isn't my phone working? So, in the re, it says five and a one drive, and in the body it says ninety-five and a one, so I'm imagining that there's a typo and that it's ninety-five. You see that? Oh, it is ninety-five in the ad. And so they're gonna have this meeting, they already did.
Four thirty-four Plymouth Street.
Okay, so that's the whole place?
And what's the other place, Wellness Street?
How come your phone's working?
Um, I just paid the bill.
I don't think, I hope it doesn't have anything to do with that.
Is it Wells?
Yeah, W E L, or, oh my gosh, the pizza shop there. Rodney's. Rodney's.
Four thirty Plymouth Street. So I would say the plaza, four thirty, four thirty-four.
And there's four sixteen for Rodney's, too, so. From three forty-four to four sixteen Plymouth Street, even side. I'd like a request on.
Update for site plan.
Update for site plan. So if we can write a letter to the owner of that plaza and ask him to update his site plan. Motion.
Is a motion, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you, did you want to discuss the trailer?
No.
I just brought it up.
Just brought this through.
Yeah, okay.
And then what looks like we missed, oh, it's September fourteenth, so we can chat about it. Let's see, ninety-five Anawan.
I think it's just making us aware of it, that's all.
Yep. It's almost right down across from the beach, did you drive down there, Rick?
No. Just at the very end.
Yeah, well, it's, it, it's not the, um, larger home that's across the street directly from the HOA, it's right before it. It would be next to the Paper Road Poplar.
So it's on the inside.
Yeah, and Jordan is right before it. So it's the third house after Jordan, or the third lot after Jordan.
So you said that was a fire, is it, for that?
I'm not exactly sure if it was. See if I can find out. It was a fire.
So obviously they're running into overtime trying to get the place done, huh?
Yeah, and you know how that is right now.
I know, I know how that is.
Especially right now.
I know, it's terrible.
Okay.
I think there was a question on one of the minutes that we approved. Is that right, Joanne? Is that the August?
I think there was a motion, maybe, but it wasn't in the minutes, but there was, I got a motion again a number of times, there was no motion, you know?
Oh, really? Okay. No, I believe you.
I think it was approved with that chain, but that chain was, was not there at all.
But there's a new set here.
It's a pretty new set, right? The little tabs designed on there.
Oh, okay.
Is that good?
So debate, can I see? Discussion on the board's open planning work.
If you want to read the motion again, I'll send it to the staff next time.
Hmm, I don't even know voting. Did we discuss it and then just never bring it to a full motion?
We have, we have the, we have a motion in it all. We just don't finish it, yes, we all said it was approved, we approved it. But there was no motion, but then when you read the minutes.
Okay, so then.
You said there was a motion.
So we all agreed, though. So I'll change, I'll amend the change to the August fifth minutes under the section discussion with order selectmen for the planning board secretary coming under the jurisdiction of the planning board to, um, that the board all agreed that we should be talking to the selectmen about it. How's that?
Okay, is that a motion?
Yep. I would agree to the August fifth minutes with the board all agreed to meet with the selectmen. Motion.
Is there a second?
Getting me confused here.
So number.
So we had, we had the original minutes and then.
We didn't make a motion.
Rick, we, we changed it to that.
Yeah, we changed it.
So we didn't make a motion.
But we didn't make the motion, we didn't make the motion at the meeting.
But we all agreed on it at the meeting.
Well, I guess, because I just assumed that we were, they already, you already voted on it, so.
It just wasn't a formal motion.
Right.
Was it motion seconded and voted, it's just agreed?
So I'm moving that to be the change.
So, so second to the change, to go back to.
So we change it, then change it back?
Yeah, we've taken, taken that out, that's all.
All right.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay. You bet.
And then the, the other set of minutes, has everybody had a chance to read those?
Yeah.
I did not get to fully read them.
Do you want to wait on those?
Yeah, that way, yeah. All right, so we push that to the, uh, September sixteenth?
Yeah, do you have that other set? I can sign it.
Sorry. Okay. Well, then, um, how about we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.